Board work session of the Managed School Board to order. And I just wanted to go over a couple just zoom room. You know, points just to clarify, our host will be. If you accidentally unmute your sound or your video. If you're not on the board or you're not an administrator who's engaging with the board during our discussion. It's likely that you'll be muted again, so don't, don't be offended. Just know that that's part of our way of managing the room a little bit better. And we are not taking public input during this work session. And if you do have questions, you're welcome to send them into the chat. It's not likely they're going to be passed on to the board during our time, but we will save those and. Possibly respond to questions after the fact. I'm not sure what we're doing with all that and. I don't know if I'm missing anything. Am I missing anything? Anyone want to? Pipe in. All right. So with that, um, tonight we're gonna hear what we're thinking. About possibilities for basically non-learning activities that can be in person that could include sports. It could include. Other extracurricular activities, clubs and whatnot. And so Troy is going to start us off with some information and then the board is just going to be able to. Discuss, ask questions, gain clarification and our intention is to reach consensus by the end of our work session. On guidance for the administrative team on how to proceed with extracurricular activities, including sports. And if we are able to do that in our time tonight, it's possible we'll have a second work session. So with that, go ahead and Troy, if you want to.
Right.
Present.
Thank you all. So I have a, I have a short presentation of about nine slides. Just really intended to give you kind of a, just a reminder about a few of the things in an overview. Of what limited in-person instruction looks like. And kind of the current plans and then allow the board who requested this meeting to, to have discussion around. What would you like to see happening in our community? You know, we have, we've had a lot of input from community members, received lots of letters, lots of support for getting our kids. Active as soon as possible. And so it's a great opportunity to discuss that in public. One of the, one of the issues that has been a real challenge for districts has been the, the loss of our, our coverage for. Our activities and that so under, under the new guidance or under the new situation that we're in. Districts have lost their communicable disease claim coverage. It's been exempted from our current liability policy. So, and that's, that's nationwide. I believe it's nationwide. I know it's statewide. It's a national issue. Our legislative, uh, special legislative sessions have tried to address that they weren't able to in their first two. There will be a third special session likely later this fall. And there's talk that they may be able to address it at that time, but there are lots of other issues that they're competing with. Over there. So I'm not really confident that it'll be addressed. But I do want the board know that there is an increased level of liability. It's not preventative. It's not preventing us from doing anything. It's just needs to be, everyone needs to be aware of it. You've seen this slide in the past. Talks about what limited in-person instruction is. And just as a reminder, you, when we heard about this back in, I believe it was. 11th of August. Super tents were kind of surprised on that Tuesday about this opportunity for limited in-person. Because it really threw a kink in a lot of our plans about how we're, we're doing several different activities. But what it means is you have the ability at the local level to determine whether or not you can provide these opportunities for kids. Outside of those county or state metrics. So the only metric that is. Has to be followed is that you have no local outbreaks. And so we would, we would consult with our local. Health provider, Marion County Health to determine and confirm that there are no local outbreaks in our community. You know, and I would assume that a local outbreak would be. Like our church congregation or one of our large businesses, you know, the towers or PepsiCo or. Or Wilco or some large organization, our community that would have an outbreak that, you know, basically shut those, one of those businesses down. So. So far, I think our communities has been really responsible and we've, we haven't had any news of those major incidents. The cohorts, maximum cohort of 10, any given cohort, maximum of two hour sessions. Maximum of 250 students per week. So you could have potentially 25 cohorts of 10 in any given week. As long as no students are members of multiple cohorts. And then just as a reminder, this limited in-person is in addition to the current comprehensive distance learning requirements. So if you joined us for the previous presentation and the community session, community listening session. We showed calendars or schedules for each of our students in each of our buildings. And this would be on top of what students learn during their, their regular day, which is for our teachers, seven 30 to 3:30. Limited in-person, schools can offer the opportunity if they meet those requirements for limited in-person. And I said, I'm going to say limited in-person instruction because that's what the, that's what the description is. But I'm going to switch once we start talking about athletics, because I don't consider that instruction that becomes an activity. But it all applies. It's still under the same limited in-person instruction guidance. So. This is based on need. So this limited person, it's, you can't single out any protected classes. Or groups of students to bring them in. It has to be based on one or more of the needs that we have listed here in the italics. So addressing community connectivity issues, including a focus on students who are, have limited or no internet access. Provide academic support, access assessment, provide social, emotional or mental health support. I'm sorry. Excited there. Build educator to student relationships. Support live peer-to-peer interaction, support ongoing. Engagement and attendance, build school, community and culture, ensure culturally relevant and sustaining pedagogy. Preparing for return to in-person instruction and provide voluntary supplemental supports. So as you look, as you look at, at all these bullets, when we talk about. The benefits of getting kids involved actively in, in our sports. They fall under a lot of these issues, a lot of these, these opportunities here, the social, emotional. Anytime you get kids together, interacting, they're building relationships. Your, your supporting period of peer interactions, obviously. You're engaging them, you're getting them more involved in school. So their attendance is likely to be much, much higher. And you know, it prepares them for returning to school because of all those previous purposes. The board has been doing some, just a reminder, board's been doing equity work through their promise scholarship program. And we do have a document that has questions that can help. Guide us through some of these, these decisions if we need to. I think they're, they're very relevant in this situation. When you talk about. You know, providing specific activities, how do they address all of our students and the needs that we have as a whole district? What are other districts doing? I believe Kevin Moth is going to join us. Are you out there, Moth? He's got some information that I'd like for him to share at this time. He's been doing a little research for in our, in our local area.
Yeah. You want me to talk about that right now, Troy?
Yes, if you're, if you're prepared.
Yep. Okay. The. Thanks for having me on. I know what you guys have been going through as far as trying to get this school year ready. I know it's craziness. And I know athletics are, are a big piece of the puzzle at Mount Angel and, and they're very important for our kids, obviously. And like Troy said, getting them tied into school and, and all that stuff that goes in, it's, it's, it's a vital piece of the puzzle for sure. I've swung both ways on this. I've, you know, my family's been very, very careful with the social distancing. I'm not going to lie. We have been over the top probably, which is good. But now I'm reading a lot of, a lot of things on what's happening to kids that are not being able to socialize, not be, be involved in. Some of the rates of depression are climbing and there's just a lot of, a lot of things that kids are missing. Not just the sport activity, but just the socialization and everything that goes with it. But. As, as you might imagine, the state's kind of all over the board on this a little bit. The, there are some schools that are, that are kind of going all in. The governor last week. Opened up the, the door for a little bit more participation in athletics. And some school districts are running with it and others are staying back, being more cautious. Like Central Oregon, if you're in Central Oregon, they've got schedules for the fall and they're going full bore, coming out of the gate hot. And then you've got Clackamas County still in phase one and they, they, you know, they won't be allowed to do anything at their school. Local schools, the majority of the local schools that I've been talking to, they're kind of our size are going to start opening up for some. All different levels, but most of them are going to open up for some conditioning and some workouts. Get kids back into shape, both physically, they've been sitting around, probably not doing a whole lot in a lot of instances. But get kids back out, get them active, get them, get them back with each other in a social distance and you know, responsible way. There are Salem Kaiser's wedding till October 1st. A little bigger district, but the small, smaller schools that, you know, that we deal with the SIO, Regis, Blanchett. Gas and Amity, Dayton, well, my, those ones are all going to start doing, you know, weight training, conditioning, things of that nature. The, the one thing is the, the schools that, like the Clackamas School District and the Salem District. That aren't allowing anything yet, those schools, they're in a little different situation than us because their, their kids play on club teams. And that's still being allowed. So their kids are getting to do some of that type of stuff and. And even if they can't do it, their school, they, they go to the hoop or they go do some other things. And again, I don't know if it's the best thing, but I do know the kids are struggling a little bit right now and, and could use a little bit. Of interaction. The, uh, so really it is kind of all over the board. Silverton is going to be opening up to workouts. And, and the, the criteria that the governor put out, it ranges all over. There's, there's a big range of things. Indoor activities, not allowed still. Basketball, volleyball, you can only do conditioning drills with those, with those sports. Outdoor sports, there's a little more flexibility on what you can do as far as conditioning and even doing some scrimmage type stuff. Cause obviously the, the spread rate outside is, is much more controllable and less likely. So that's kind of where. Places are at. I know everybody's got different opinions on this stuff and, and I don't hold anybody, I don't hold anybody's opinion against. I totally get all the way in every angle that people are coming from. I just, I do feel that the kids could use a little something to get back going. And I definitely think that that's one step. I, I got a lot of faith in our coaches and our administration and, and people that we can do some things safely. But if, if that's not the decision, I understand that as well. There's a lot that goes into it. So that's kind of a quick synopsis, I guess.
Hey. Thank you, Kevin. Does the school board have any questions for, for Kevin while he's on?
Hey Kevin or, or Troy, what, what dates are they talking about starting? Are they talking about starting at their school reopening date, like according to the OSA guidelines?
The, can you hear me, Rod?
Yeah.
Most, so that's also kind of all over the board. Jervis, most of the ones that are going to just go to straight workouts to start with, a lot of them are going next Monday, the first, that's like the first. Official date that the governor kind of cleared for that. Right now we're still on a hold. Others are saying September 14th. It's kind of a, get, because some of the schools are starting a little bit earlier than ours, I think for in, in the actual instruction. But I think most are in the next couple of weeks getting started. Most are Eugene, not going to do anything until kids are back in the building. They're, they're holding off on that. Like I said, those kids kind of, they play some club sports and things like that, but. Little bit of a slight, St. Paul is starting the September 8th. So I guess that would be a week from Monday or a week plus a day. I think so that they make sure they have all their. Their strict regulations in place and everything's understood because by the time you finally get to meet with the kids and everything again and know what's going on. I think it takes a little bit of time, but some are, like I said, some are going gangbusters, August 31st, you know. Playing full sets of games. I don't think that's the way to go like Central Oregon. I don't know that they'll be doing it quite correctly, but. It's all kind of all over the place. It's my best answer. I'm sorry. I can't be too much better than that.
So that, there, there was some return to sports guideline that I was, that I was reading last week that. That showed the date connected to the, they called it the school reopening date. You know, for the, it was the limited return to play policy.
Yep.
And that was tied to, I didn't think anything like that could start until the, the return to school date for the district.
I think that this just, this is a recent thing from the governor. This is a more recent update to that. Yeah.
Okay.
I think what I read was August 31st was the date.
Yeah. So they just set a hard date rather than trying to tie it to your school's opening date?
Yeah, that's what I read.
That probably makes more sense, I guess.
And I'm having, I could, Rod, remind me, I'll send you a picture of what I have on my phone. I'll shoot it to you. It's not perfect, but all, and I can get you the website link too.
Coach John Conklin, are they opening up then the cross-country?
You, you could, yeah. I mean, that's one of the outdoor ones that theoretically you can socially distance. The, all the, pretty much all the outdoor sports except football, football, full contact. Obviously there's higher chance of transmission there. So football is not included in that. Nor is any of the indoor like swimming, wrestling, basketball cheer. Oh, there it is. That's, thank you. There you go. And you can see we're a comprehensive distant learning. So we've, we've fallen on the right side of all that. And you can kind of see how, how it goes down the line there.
Yep. And so are, is the plan to try and do soccer and. What's that, cross-country?
That's what, that's what we're discussing tonight, John.
Thank you.
Hey Kevin.
Yeah.
Can I, Sherry, I'm going to ask a question of Kevin. So Kevin and Troy. What have you been hearing from coaches? Are they interested in. Getting back in some sort of routine and connection with their teams or is there a mixture? Or where, where do the coaches stand on all of, all of this?
I think, I think our coaches are pretty excited to get back with the kids. We, we have, we have a really good coaching staff, almost maybe too intense at times. I mean, we like to go for it, I think a little bit, but. They really care about their kids and I think they have their best interest in mind. I know when I've talked to my coaches and I think you guys know this, I mean, our number one goal is to teach good values and, and make strong young kids. Winning championships and stuff is all fun, but that's not at all what we're trying to do. And I haven't really, you know. We know that that's not going to be something we're shooting for. I think they just want to connect and, and be around their kids. Lot of the schools that I've talked to, and I've kind of devised a little bit of this. Are going with like three little mini seasons this fall and basically. Doing the spring sports kind of first, the little conditioning and things because it is safer. You know, less chance of issues coming up and then going into the fall. Sports and then to the winter ones, because it kind of leads into the winter season and the indoor stuff is the, you know, is the most dangerous right now. So we kind of break it down into those types of seasons and keep the safest things possible that we can.
Thank you. And then if I could ask a follow-up question. So one of the issues that I see with all this. A detail that we can't not talk about is the cost, because if we're going to ask a coach to do some. Conditioning with the kids and expect them to connect and organize, but there's no full-blown competition. It's going to be different than what we would. Expect to pay a full coaching stipend for, and I'm curious what, what you all are thinking, Troy and Kevin about. That piece of things. How are we going to pay for this when it's kind of up in the air?
Well, yeah, let me, let me finish just a few more slides and then a couple of them will address your questions and then we'll, we'll finish up. But I have a, I have that on my list. So if you don't mind. So we're looking, so right now the limited in-person, which is the actual intent of the, of the. Of the guidance has to do with us working with small groups of kids in our buildings primarily. And so we are focused, so focused on getting our instruction started. We don't even know if we're going to have staff available for limited instruction yet. So we've made a, we've drawn a line in the sand as administrative team. That we're not going to offer in-person instruction under this guidance until at the earliest October 19th. So we'll get a month of instruction under our belts before we're going to be able to try to, to bring in these small groups, which will have to be. You know, outside of the teaching schedules that you've seen in our earliest presentation. So it can be very challenging, but. We will be focusing on assessments first, but. That's what we're planning is for the other activities. And then of course, tonight we're talking about sports participation in athletics underneath this guidance. Some of the considerations that I think the board needs to discuss and consider whenever we're talking about how we move forward, if we choose to move forward. Is that I think because of the, because of the requirements with social distancing and sanitizing and cleaning. Logging folks in and out each day for contract, contact tracing, should we have someone be ill. We're going to have to have a district employee onsite. Other than a coach that will be monitoring and overseeing the process at all times when activities are here. That is a high recommendation. And then as Kevin mentioned, you know, there's an option of if you choose to allow activities, it could be all sports in that season one, if you will. Clear up until December 26th or 8th, whatever it is. Or an option of what Kevin talked about, trying to work in all three sports and all three seasons. In that same time period in a different sequence. The, the last chart that we already shared talks about full participation, full participation and the conditioning, working, workout options. That some of the sports have, not all of them have that option. But some of them do have the option of, of do we just use it for getting kids together, interacting, conditioning, working out, but not. Go to the level of the full participation. Transportation is an issue. If we do go to full participation, then we start addressing transportation. And with the distancing on, on transportation, that could be. Could be a challenge in itself. And of course, anytime you, you put, put. Our kids in a smaller. Confinement such as transportation, you increase the opportunity for spread. Coaching contracts, like you mentioned, Sherry. Yes, currently when we, we did about two weeks of activities in the summer. We made it clear that that was a volunteer. Situation. Under this situation, I'd recommend that we definitely have coaches under contract. I think for liability purposes, it's necessary. I've talked with Kevin and Dale about this a little bit. You know, if we, if we did a season one or, or just a conditioning and workouts. We would, we would rewrite our contracts so that they would be worded in a manner that. Coaches would get a smaller stipend for, for the season one, if you will. And then, and then if they continued with the regular season as OSA currently has scheduled. Then they would get the remainder of their stipend, but we would split it up to where they would be a piece of it in the fall and the remainder. If the season occurs and if the season doesn't occur, then, then the contract ends at the end of the first season. And then volunteer participation, another decision that would have to be made because volunteers are a. Big important process in the contact tracing. If we allowed volunteers, we would have to be a lot more specific about their level of involvement and commitment to being there for the same cohort each time. And then as you've seen, the differences in, in the allowable levels of activity based on. What we're in, which is a comprehensive distance learning on the right-hand column. And it shows you. You know, that some of, some of those activities, you know, on the top and then football on the bottom. They are not allowed for full participation under this guidance. So with that. I believe, and I don't have the guidance in front of me, but the, the question you had, I can't remember if it was John or Rod about when you can participate. I believe. Under this, you need to, the kids need to be enrolled. So to be able to participate. So I would assume that that would mean the first day of instruction, which would be September 21st. But I would have to get clarification on that to be exactly certain, because the summer guidance ends on, on August 30th. Or August 30th is his last day. So any questions about that piece?
So I think on the, the limited in-person instruction, all that stuff, I mean, if the rest of the board is okay with it, the, you know, the. Putting it off until October 19th, I think that's, I think that's fine personally. You know, I'd like to just kind of put that one away if we can first, and then just be able to concentrate on talking about sports. And we can have time to talk about the, you know, that, the, what do you call it? The limited in-person instruction, like at the next board meeting.
Okay. That's, if that's what the board chooses.
Sherry?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. To me, they're certainly two different things. So I would agree with Rod.
So we can just, we're good with the October 19th, I guess. I mean, we're not voting on it or anything, but.
Well, it just, just to reach consensus, does, do any of the board members, so John, do you have, are you opposed? Or do you have concerns about agreeing that that October 19th date makes sense for, for us? Or Teresa?
So that's October 19th as opposed to what Troy said, the first day of instruction, which is September 21st.
We're talking about two different things.
Okay.
So the limited. Limited in-person instruction is a separate issue from the. Athletics, right?
Yes.
Correct? Is that correct? Yeah. So the limited in-person, which is the 10 cohorts of 10, 250 max, all that.
Okay.
That the administration is recommending that they not open that up until October 19th. After the kids have been, and kids have been back in learning for a month.
Okay.
So that's what we're deciding on. Erica?
I would say at least then I will bring you something more formalized or Troy will at the next board meeting that. Shows like our priorities by then, like Troy said, we want to get a good handle on a comprehensive distance learning. Before we really dive into that, into the limited in-person. So I just want to be clear on that.
Is that so that you can, is that so that you can sort of target who needs the more help by how they're doing or not doing on the distance learning?
Correct. So it says that limited in-person needs to be based on need and that comprehensive distance learned. So first we have to establish where kids are at and have some data, right? So we need to know who needs it. And that limited in-person cannot, it has to be supplemental. So it cannot replace core instruction, comprehensive distance learning has to remain the core. And so it's a small little guidance. It's only like three and a half pages, but there's a lot packed into it. And so we will, we will bring you our proposal and at that time, however you wish to receive it. I just don't want to give the impression that we're going to be ready to go October 19th, because it'll be based on need and priorities.
But the, so these are, are going to be a lot of kids that work with, that you work with. So, so going to October 19th, you're okay with at least that long. They're not going to, we're not going to be leaving them behind too bad.
Like Troy said, my priority is finishing assessments. So I can already say with confidence right now is like, we weren't able to assess anybody in person in the, in the spring. And so yes, I, I can tell you with confidence that I want to do that. And beyond that, I can't tell you what I'm comfortable with right now.
Okay. Thank you.
So yeah, thank you. Good discussion. So does any, do any board members need? So yeah, thank you. Good discussion. So does any, do any board members need further clarification on what we're just agreeing on that for the limited in-person instruction? The, the choice, the consensus of the board would be if everybody's in agreement that October 19th would be the very earliest for the administration to consider that.
Yes.
So everybody's good. John, are you good? Yep, I think I heard yes. Yep. And Greg said yes already and Rod did as well. So you have consensus from the board on that. Thank you, Rod. Good call. And now what, what questions, what comments, what do we want to say about sports activities?
First, first clarity on the date. So I'm looking at two different places on the OSA and the Oregon Health one. The director, Kate Brown one, and they specifically have the date is August 31st that it can begin. And also I thought on that form, I can't remember the name of it, Troy, but I thought when we turned in on 17th with your plans for going back to school, I thought you had the 31st as the date that we were starting that.
That's the date, that's OSA's date. But that you're eligible. So I don't know. I, I'm not certain because I'm rereading it right now too. And, and it also says you have to be enrolled. So if you're, we're not enrolled yet. There's gonna, there's gonna be some folks who aren't enrolled yet. So we can plan it, but specific students, for example, wouldn't be able to be involved. Right now we have about half of our students enrolled. So there would be some challenges there, but by rule, it does say the 31st is when the new guidance takes over. But again, we're looking at two guidances, so it can be confusing because OSA has their guidance, but then, but then the only way we're able to use their guidance is under the loophole of limited in-person instruction. Because otherwise we would. County metrics.
Right. Cause they also use the term when approved school district reopening date. So do you consider that when students are there or when the teachers?
We, we do know that that official date is September 21st.
That's the district reopening date, not when the teachers show up?
That's when the students start.
The reopening date is?
The reopening date for students is September 21st. Yes, we can confirm that. That also applied to our food service program as well. As far as being able to serve kids under the waiver. So it's considered the, the first day on the 21st.
Um, a question. So there's, you know, a lot of pieces to this puzzle. And have you come up with any scenario plans on when it might make sense to open up our, our sports activities? Maybe just for conditioning and then transitioning into maybe some scrimmaging. Is there, is there any design, any plan that you've come up with quite yet?
Well, we, we can come up with the design. I think the, the biggest question is, does the board want to allow the activities? And then are they comfortable with allowing the activities and at what level, you know, full participation or just the workout? Because there's a big difference as far as, as far as the risk of spread. And, and so, you know, we're, we're in a tough county right now. We're, the state is leveling off. We're escalating. We're, we're a small community, but we have, we have folks in our community that are out going lots of other places. I hear a lot of information from our youth organizations and, and others who are, well, we've been down in Corvallis at a huge tournament and nobody got sick there. I hear that a lot, but I, I would also warn the, warn the board that there's a very big difference between private organizations and public organizations. Because public organizations have a reporting and accountability level that private organizations do not have. And so folks may think that the risk is not out there by, by the youth activities that are happening, but the risk is still there. And there are situations where there have been outbreaks. And so as much as we don't want to recognize that sometimes, so we can, you know, move forward, we also need to understand that there is a risk. We just have to balance the, the difference between that risk of not doing something and the social emotional state of our kids, you know, versus the activity. We know, I've had a lot of parents come to me or, or share information about the social emotional impact of kids not being active, the depression, the increased teen suicide incidences. We are well aware of that. And I would say that even more so the kids who are not in athletics, those numbers are way higher. I don't have the data to share that, but I would, I would, based on previous experience and the data that we know about kids that are not involved in sports activities, I would guess that they have the same issues around needing to be active and involved. But I just want the board to be able to make an informed decision on what level of participation we allow moving forward.
Troy, full, full participate, all of these sports are going to have, or are scheduled to have full participation like December through June, correct? Just in shortened seasons?
Only, I mean, going back to the, going back to the, the schedule, no, not all of them. Football, wrestling, basketball, they're not. Not if you're, not while you're in, let's see if I'm sharing.
No, I mean, if you meet the, if you meet the county metrics.
If you meet the county metrics, yes, but yeah, once you meet the county metrics, but I don't anticipate that. Maybe spring sports.
So a thought to, to, I guess, make our conversation a little, let's tighten it up and then we'll broaden it. So I'm curious to hear from all of the board members. I think the first question is, how do we feel about allowing teams to get together for conditioning? So that just conditioning and connecting. What, what support or opposition does each board member have for at least allowing that to happen? When we can get organized and let that, let that happen?
Well, Sherry, Sherry, not to get hung up, but the terminology I think we need to be clear on. So in our statement, we're talking about full participation and we're talking about conditioning workouts. In the guidance, it's actually saying training, conditioning and competition. So which, are we just talking about, when we say full participation, are we talking about competition? Is that what we mean? And then the other part, conditioning and workout is training and conditioning?
Here, yeah, it's training and conditioning only, as you can see on the screen.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's, that was my understanding. We can allow training and conditioning. Or we can allow participation in the activity against other teams.
So participation is competition against other schools or?
Correct.
Okay.
Start at that end, Sherry. At the, at the end of competitions and work our way down to where we're comfortable. Because. I know I'm clearly not comfortable with competition in the fall.
I'm not either.
I don't think I am either.
Okay. Greg, what are your thoughts?
For me, I would rather, rather than saying in the fall, I would probably look at it in terms of each month at a time because we don't know what's going to happen. So if we wanted to say that first month of September that we didn't have competitions, I'm, I'm fine with that. And then revisit it as we go.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
So a month at a time, Troy and Kevin, does that, does that work? Taking this a month at a time?
Well, yeah, the, I think the question that, that Kevin's probably thinking about is if you, if you do just turn the switch and decide to do competition or full participation, then you have to, then you have to schedule events with other, other teams. So that would be something that would need to be done in advance, probably further in advance.
And, and my thought on that is, you know, we cross that bridge if we get there. If, if we're at a point where we're comfortable allowing full participation with competition, realizing that, let's say we decide that in November and they're going to, the kids might miss out on some competition in December because we weren't able to get it scheduled. They may be able to still engage, you know, maybe by January. These are elements that are good to be aware of because the sooner we can advise, the better of course. But with this time, planning is not easy. And giving you a lot, giving you months in advance like we're used to, where you can look a year, six months, two months ahead. That's challenging. So I don't know. I don't know. I don't know how to respond to that, Troy.
No, I'm, I'm just bringing your attention. I'm not saying that we can't do it. I think it's a great idea. Yeah.
I haven't ever done scheduling of sports months out. But the, obviously the other option would be to schedule predicated on our ability to participate. And those that would accept our scheduling on that basis may end up doing a double scheduling kind of an affair if there are other teams within the district that didn't have the constraints that we have.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Sports guys want to play sports. So they're going to, the, the Moffitt and his, and his peers, they're, they're, they're leaning forward to make this happen. I'm in the position of trying to say whatever we can do to make that happen is what we're trying to do. We're not, we're coming up with tight wording here, but we're not, I don't think we're offering constraints here.
Sherry, this is Dale. Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Hey Moff or Troy, is there guidance, if we're looking at full participation in sports, you know, is there guidance about how many practices need to take place? Because that's, you need to be thinking about that.
I think that's all been thrown out. I think all those requirements have been thrown out unless I've missed something, Moff.
Well, there, there is for football and, and those things. And we would, we would say they have to practice nine times anyway. And for me, that's a, because the kids is, they're not in shape to do. They're not in shape to get after it anyway. I think, I think you guys made a good point on the month to month thing because it sounds to me like a lot of the schools are going to be kind of in the same, kind of play it by ear and try this out and see how it goes. While we're doing some conditioning and small group stuff. And then if we're still okay, then maybe we can expand it a little bit, but I don't think it's anything, I don't think we need to rush into it crazy. And like you're saying, I think if we kind of slow play it and see how it goes. I don't have any, I don't think any of our coaches have any issues with that if, if that's what we do.
You can still be able to schedule stuff off, do you think?
Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll make that work if it comes, we'll, we'll do it. People will be, I, I think people will all be in the same general, you know, they're, they're all going to want to play and we'll, we'll figure that out. I think we can.
And Erica has something to share.
Cause I'm always the ray of sunshine in a meeting. And I just first of all appreciate the board recognizing that scheduling is a challenge and that while we want to make it happen in the next week, recognizing that if you take it month by month, it might not happen right away. So first of all, thank you for acknowledging that and supporting us, the district team. Super appreciate that. But on that note, I just want to throw another thing in there for consideration as you do this is going to be training for our teams, our, our, our students, our coaches, our potential volunteers. As Troy mentioned earlier in the presentation, we're going, our nursing team has not done this yet. They work at Legacy and when I met with them, they haven't even, I mean, I heard Silverton is doing this, but they haven't even been working with them yet. So we will want to make sure that we have the appropriate COVID protocols in place that we have, you know, everything done there for, you know, in the event that there is a potential case or presumptive case that we have everything in place and we've done all the trainings and that we know that we've done it the right way. And like you've said, that stuff doesn't happen overnight. And so I guess I just want that to be taken into consideration as well.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I would, I would just say, you know, as an individual board member, I would not expect that this could happen by August 31st. I would not expect that this could happen by even September 14th. I think, you know, the timing, I would, I would say as a board member, the timing will be what it will be when everything can, can be in place, the training done. And in the meantime, if the coaches want to be giving, and this is, I guess, well, let me hold that thought until we get consensus from the board. So I think we have consensus that full-blown, full participation right now is not supported to the competition level. Is anybody disagreeing with that?
But we'll revisit it monthly.
We reached consensus there and we will revisit it monthly. Now let's talk about the training and conditioning. Are we comfortable allowing our teams to start training and conditioning when they're ready, they've been trained? They have all the, you know, elements in order for it to be a safe, a safe exercise. Well, as safe as we can make it.
Can we ask Moffett to define what that is though? Are we initially just talking about the spring sports that now we're going to do in this first part of season one? Is that what we're talking about? So cross-country softball, baseball?
Well, I think if you, I'm thinking that if they're just talking about training and conditioning, it would be for all sports. It would just be a matter of coordinating the events and activities that we maintain space distancing and, and can, you know, turn over our, our cleaning and sanitizing processes to allow for the mix group to come in.
And then are we also only talking about outside stuff at this?
The, the inside activities, they can, they can still train and condition. So we could, we could look at, yeah, we could get our volleyball kids in the gym. We could, we could get our kids in the weight room, although weight room is going to be very limited. So it's, you know, it would be a very small group of kids. Literally four to six, probably in our whole weight room area at a time, at any given time. And then, so it'd be limited. It would take some scheduling, but no, they can't be indoors. It's just, it's just much more restrictive.
So hey Troy, the, the items that are on the indoor and outdoor activity, the difference there is the indoor, they can do training and conditioning only, but if they're outdoor, we could allow like outdoor volleyball.
Correct.
Okay.
John, did I hear you say how come?
No, I, I had perceived the volleyball thing and I thought somebody's thinking that's done in Oregon. That's, that's just right. Thank you.
Just need to bring in a couple of truckloads of sand.
Yeah, well, that's there's always something. You got all that sodas over there they can use too.
So be, before I go into talking about what I'm okay with, I'm, I mean, I, I'll be the wet blanket for a minute. You know, in terms of actually the metrics to bring kids back, right? The case positivity rate, that Marion County is double what it needs to be to bring kids back in person. And in terms of the number of cases, active cases we have in Marion County, we have about 10 times the number that we can have to bring kids back in person. So we're not even close to bringing kids back for instruction. So that's going to give you guys a little bit of a feel for where I'm going to be coming from in terms, I'm only going to be in favor of the very safest of these things. That's going to be my position on it. I'm, I'm sure.
And Greg, you were gonna add to the conversation?
I was just going to say that I'm, I'm okay with the training and conditioning. And whatever those guidelines that, and I might want to see them put together by Moffett as to what that would look like. You know, because there are quite a few sports and how they would overlap and how we would organize that. Because we are talking about different cohorts of kids. Do we let them cross sports? Do they stay in one sport? All of those kinds of questions come up when we start talking about multiple sports for them.
That'll, that, and that'll be the tricky part. That's one reason I kind of like, even, even if we did it through conditioning and kind of broke those into the seasons, we'd keep the cohorts kind of the same with too mu, not too much crossover. It gets a little tricky when, when you start doing that, but we can look at, I'm open to looking at anything. Like I said, we can do anything that works in the safest way. I, I'm all for.
Any, any other questions? Teresa, do you have thoughts on the conditioning and training piece of it?
Well, I think if it's.
Well, I think if it's, you know, well thought, you know, what the guidelines are and such for it, that I am in favor of them doing the training and the conditioning.
Troy, can you tell us a little more about the guidelines for this stuff? What, what, what does training and conditioning mean? How big are groups of kids, stuff like that?
Just, I can only, I can't share any specifics about what the activities are. Kevin would probably be better. But yeah, ten, groups of 10 at a time. And if you have multiple groups of 10, for example, football, if they had, you know, different positions, they would have to stay in those two groups of 10. And they would have to have, I believe last time we provided guidance, we wanted 20 yards between each group of 10 as a barrier when they're on the field. And then, you know, we just have to make sure that we have, we don't have their paths crossing. So if we have the track kids coming in and they go out onto the track, we'd, we have them enter in one area. And then we had the football folks entering over by the, the greenhouse, you know, towards the practice field. So they weren't crossing paths. We don't use locker rooms at all. We avoid any, anyone even going into a locker room. And we just have kids, you know, obviously dressed down and shower at home. And we don't get into any of that, that piece. But, you know, weight room, much more prescriptive about, you know, how we use space. What we're hearing from other districts is a weight room, they're not allowing kids to like move around from station to station. They're basically providing what they need in one location, keeping them to stay in that location. Because every time they move, it has to be sanitized. So it's very difficult in the weight room. My son-in-law is a, is a coach and Salem Kaiser. And he was at McKay and they're actually remodeling their weight room. So they couldn't even access it. But they just took all their weights out in the field. They were, they worked out, they had stations out in the, on the football field with their dumbbells and whatnot. So, you know, there's ways to be more creative about it. But as far as the traditional use of a weight room, I think it's, it's gonna be very restrictive.
So I, I have a question that I should probably know the answer to. I guess I didn't know that sports would fall under limited in-person. I thought it fell only under OSA guidance. So would that then those 200 up to 250, if we had all of those students then playing sports, would take away any of our potential offerings to offer actual academic instruction then as we move forward with developing our guidance for in, for in-person instruction?
Yeah, I had that same question, Erica, that I was gonna ask. And, and I, I also, I think this is also a good time to clarify that sports are, we're talking high school level. I know that we have sports at the middle school as well. And so what are we thinking there? Troy and Kevin, are you, are you hoping, advocating, interested in planning for middle school sports? Or are we only limiting it to high school?
Well, we haven't talked about middle school and, and primarily because the focus has been at the high school and we don't know that we're gonna have space to allow for much middle school because of the spacing requirements. So it's getting taken off, you know, just taking a small bite out of it right now, considering the high school. To open up to middle school would be a whole different level, you know, of use of facility if we're maximizing our use of outside facilities.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I just wanted to get that clarified. So we're all on the same page.
Yeah, we just really haven't talked about middle school at all yet.
Okay.
So Sherry?
Yeah.
I'm looking at one of the FAQ things for, it's from OSA and OHA. And that thing that she just brought up was one of the questions. And what they say, well, their answer is cohorts may be separated from limited in-person instructions. So the sports teams are a separate count from that other thing is what they're saying.
They're different cohorts, but are they still part of the 250?
Well, I'm just, this is what it says, is it says, how do the cohort groups apply to sports teams? It says cohorts may be separated from the limited in-person instruction guidance.
But the cohorts, that's the group of, that's, the cohorts are the groups of 10. That's not the whole group.
I think what it's saying is those sports groups are separate from the 250 and the limited guidance.
And, and I think we need to get that confirmed because that is a, a question as well. And, and what are the numbers generally, Kevin, Troy, at the high school level? For how many of our kids at a time would wanna be participating in this conditioning and training? Do we have an estimate on the number?
We could probably have 100, Kevin. Help me out here.
Yeah, it depends. It depends if you went like all the sports or if you went by season. Like if you went by season, we typically have, what, 40, 25, 65, 80? Spring. Winter's a little smaller, maybe 70 in the spring and fall 40, 20, 60, 80 in the fall, between 70 and 80, 590, I'd say each season.
And some of those are the same kids, so.
Yep, yep.
Yeah. And so thinking that maybe we have 100 athletes, we'd still have 150 of the limited in-person opportunities. Yeah, it, it, that's a, that's a question that as we move forward month to month, because we know that we're not gonna be able to do the, the support for the limited in-person for the instruction piece until as early as October 19th. By then we'll have clarity on that question. And it could impact our monthly decision on the athletics. If that's eating into the instructional in-person abilities, we'll have to be even more thoughtful and yeah, thoughtful about these decisions. Thank you, Erica. Good question.
Is intramural sports for middle school, any kind of a consideration? Certainly be outside of the regular curriculum time. But I'm thinking those guys who we were trying to get to be able to socialize and break out of their, their shell, as well as those that like sports anyway. This, this is gonna be kind of a hard, a hard pill to swallow.
John, what do you mean by intra, intra-mural?
I mean, it, developing a program for after-school of competition, training, whatever, so that those people would feel affiliated with a sport and be able to get their peer input as well as hopefully some competition at some point.
Yeah, and I think with, you know, with the, the lay of the land, I don't know that we'll be able to support and offer, I mean, with the board can give guidance on this and, and reach consensus, but to support and offer school-sponsored athletics at the middle school level at the competition level. I don't know that that is really.
But then, Sherry, I'm talking about within the school itself.
Like a PE class? I mean, I could see PE taken a priority for middle school. Having PE classes take a, a higher priority for kids, maybe give them workouts they can do at home and, and be more focused there. But Troy, do you wanna, or Kevin, do you wanna respond to John's comment?
Well, if, I think if you're talking intermural, are you talking, you're saying, John, like, what I remember intermural, like play any, kind of breaking your, your own kids up and playing each other, right? Without no travel. Yeah, no travel. I get what you're saying.
Yeah, scrimmaging.
And I'm saying just, it doesn't need to be the sixth graders against the seventh graders against the eighth graders. It may end up being we, teams are ABC depending on skill. Or it may be everybody's gonna play. So we took and we did one, two, three, and you've got a number and you go to that team. Doesn't, and it doesn't matter. There's a thousand ways. My concern here was, given the full education option, as best we have the ability and resources, are we making a cut of the middle school people that we have to cut? That is, or and, and even more importantly, are these people more at need than the high schoolers? Emotionally, et cetera.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair. I mean, we just assumed that we started the high school, but it's a fair question.
I, I do, the, the idea of the intermural thing is not a bad idea, I don't think, as we get going. Because one of the main things we'd probably wanna, you know, limit the risk of the middle school kids by traveling together. I know a middle school bus, probably not a lot of social distancing and that stuff. But maybe that could be a step, the first step they kind of take as they, you know, after the condition or whatever is maybe an intermural type thing. That'd be something I think we could look at.
And that whole thing about camaraderie. When, when you played sports from fourth grade on or whatever it is in this town that we play baseball at, the, you wanna say, the guys are saying, I've participated in every sport every year. And when you have, we didn't participate in sixth or seventh grade, then those guys, they need and want that camaraderie. And, and they're kind of leaning forward to it and they, and they're, what do you call it? First, their persona is, they see, they see us wrapped around it. And so I just, I thought it was important for self-esteem and team building and peer.
So I guess my kind of question on that is, does the OSA guidance apply to middle school level? It doesn't, does it?
No, does not.
So how, I, I'm not sure how, how we.
Well, there's, okay, my bad.
No, no, it's a good, no, not you bad, John. It's a really good point that
Okay, good.
We need to, we need to kind of flesh out. So I don't know, Jared and Kevin and Troy, do you have?
Generally, middle school follows, you know, the, the majority of the guidance or, or direction of OSA because they're trying to prepare those kids for high school. But technically, there is no guidance for middle school. There just is no guidance.
Yeah, other than the in-person stuff, the in-person ed.
It seems like the, the middle school sports, if we're gonna do it outside of the normal learning day, would apply to the, that other in-person, that limited in-person instruction. And, and likely would count towards that 250 number that we, that we have. That's my guess, but I don't know.
Definitely.
That limited return to play is actually K through 12. It's K-12 school sports, limited return to play.
And is that an OSA document?
No, that's that, no, that's the, that's executive order 2027 from Governor Kate Brown and the Oregon Health Association Authority. So, but yeah, so the OSA, OSA's, yeah, so the OSA does regulate the high school. But this guidance from Kate Brown has K-12 on it.
We gen- we generally follow OSA guidance. So many of the middle school athletic directors are also the high school athletic directors. And so just keeping in line with the safety practices and protocols. You know, and, and even when it comes to scheduling, you know, there, there's always variables at play because high school takes precedence. So when we think about not only competition, but referees and umpires, transportation, things of that nature. You know, there's, it, it's definitely a coordinated activity with our high school sports.
But if we're just talking about training and conditioning for now, I, I would think that we ought to be able to give the middle schoolers the same opportunities that we give the high schoolers, unless there's some real conflict somewhere.
Yeah, absolutely. I think like Kevin said, it's just that coordination piece of, of spacing.
Yeah, facilities and, and, and yeah, it seems like high school would kind of take, take the priority over middle school. Do we know if other schools, how they're addressing the middle school sports question?
What I, what I know is that the ADs have messaged a couple of times throughout the summer and they're real, they're tentatively looking to touch base the first week or so of September. And so I'll know more about where everybody's kind of leaning and what they're thinking at that time.
Yeah, I just, I just know if we do something for the high schoolers and we don't do it, if you've got a middle school student that's an athlete, you're gonna be pissed.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so what, what more do we need to, to discuss and reach consensus on? What are we missing? Do we have consensus that at the high school level, we do support the conditioning and training?
Yes.
Yes.
Greg, yes. John, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe pieces of it.
Yes.
Rod, pieces of it?
Pieces of it.
That's consensus.
Talk more about that, Rod.
No, John, that, that's a majority. That's not consensus.
Positive stuff is part of consensus, Rod.
Okay. Most of the indoor activity, all of the indoor activity, I wouldn't, I'm not comfortable with. We're bringing kids into the, into the buildings when we can't bring them, we can't bring, we can't bring 10 kids into the gymnasium to teach them, but we can bring 10 kids into the gymnasium to play volleyball. That makes no sense. If, if we're gonna bring 10 kids in, into the gymnasium, let's teach them.
We already heard that at the state level, Rod. We tried to reason that, that's what superintents have been complaining about for the last month.
I, I do agree with.
Well, that's, this is, this is the thing that we're putting off until October 19th, right, to bring it in kids. Right? I mean, that could be bringing in kids in the gymnasium, 10 kids at a time, just like we could be playing volleyball with them.
Correct.
I mean, I just, we've got limited resources. We need to know how we're gonna use them. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Rod. And Kevin, you were gonna weigh in?
I agree with Rod. I mean, every, some of this, we're, we're obviously taking our own decisions because, you know, you can do all the way up to full participation. But the, every study I've seen says indoors is much more dangerous. And I'd feel more comfortable starting off with outdoor things. And it's a, it's a lot easier to distance. And I don't know, it, it makes sense to me to start out there and then see from there.
And, you know, speaking from personal experience, there's a whole lot you can do outside with a yoga mat and a set of free weights. I mean, there's a lot you can do. A burpee is hard. And if you do 30, that's a good workout. And you don't need to be in a gym to do that. So that's just my, I, I do, I do agree with Rod that now that we're in a place that we're wanting to encourage the training and conditioning, let's talk about that. I, I am not comfortable allowing kids in a weight room, for sure. That just seems way too risky. And even indoors in an, in a large gym space, I, I, I'm leaning, I, I agree with Rod on that one as well. So what does everybody else think?
My thoughts on the indoor space is we use our indoor space when we can use our indoor space for instruction. That's my thoughts on indoor space. The outdoor space, we can, we can talk about all kinds of things there. But I mean, that's kind of my position on it. And, you know, I'll follow the board with whatever we decide. But I mean, that's where I'm at.
Greg and Teresa and John, do you wanna weigh in?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of with you guys, but I'm also with Troy in that it, it is really confusing that coming from the experts, which are the governor's office with their epidemiologists and everybody else, they're saying, yes, you can go for it. And I get that we don't feel comfortable with it. It's just an odd situation to be in. About the indoor activities.
And, and I am in favor of using all the resources that we have at our availability. And if somebody has said that that is not available for this, I don't think it has to be removed for that.
So thank you, John. You just wanna follow the guidelines and if it allows for indoor activities with sports now, then that's okay?
Yeah, and that if it doesn't allow for sports, then, or if it doesn't allow. Yeah, and that if it doesn't allow for sports, then, or if it doesn't allow for instructions, but it allows for sports, I say we don't have to wait until somebody cracks up north and uh comes through, that we can go ahead and drive on with sports uh where they can play sports.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't make sense to withhold the space because somebody's got a burr in their fur.
And Teresa, what do you think?
Um, you know, the, the outdoor conditioning, you know, I agree that, yeah, whatever they can do outdoors. Um, I kind of have mixed feelings on the indoor one. I get both sides of it. I get the importance of getting kids involved and, you know, doing some of their conditioning such. And with limits of ten in the gym, I guess I lean more towards what John was saying that that's, when you keep the limit at ten. To me, it seems more safe if there's, you know, more than one group of ten in there. I, you know, I hear both sides and I just get so lost and confused by all of it.
Thank you. So you have, I think we have agreement from the board that conditioning and training are, are okay. We're, we're on the fence on indoor use of indoor facilities. Um, and Troy and, and Kevin, what do you need more? More guidance from us or is, is what we've discussed good enough for you to move forward?
Well, I'm hearing no weight room use.
Well, that, I just said that. I, that's my opinion.
That, that's what I'm hearing, at least the, from what the folks who spoke up about it. And then, you know, that is something we could make accommodations for potentially. But um, you know, as far as indoor, you know, one of our slides I shared is equity. I want to make sure that if we're limiting indoor, that we're providing that opportunity outdoor, if we, if we choose to go that direction.
Volleyball, for example?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And as, as we approach, you know, the, the October nineteenth and after dates, um, you know, our discussions will include priority, well, I would, I would guess priority will be given to instruction over sports if there is um, you know, uh, trying to get into an indoor space at the same time, although with sports, it's at after school and whatnot. Um, but anyway, that's, you know, as we, as this evolves, there will be more discussion on all of these issues. What else does anybody have to say or questions you have, comments?
So I, I wanted to just ask Troy about one thing that he mentioned earlier. And that's with um, with any of the activities, we were talking about having uh requiring a, a, a monitor, if you will, somebody to, that's keeping their eye on things, that's not a coach?
Yes. I, I, I just think where there's two, there's gonna be too many things happening. Coaches are gonna be coaching. They're not gonna be able to mon- I don't believe that they will be able to monitor that uh some of those activities. Um, I think we're, and because of the level of liability that's, that's there, uh, um, we've got a, we've got to keep track of where the groups are and, and the spacing and the, and the sanitizing and cleaning practices. And you know, should, should we have an outbreak, we have to be responsible for that contract taste tracing. We have to be able to provide that documentation to show who was, who was where, when, if you will. And so um, I, I just don't think we can do that with, with some training and turning people loose. I think it's gonna take some monitoring.
Is it gonna take additional funding?
Well, um, you know, the first, the first thought is that, you know, Kevin's our AD, we just throw him in there to do that. But the reality is, you know, he's a coach too. And so he would, he would have to, he would have to either give up his coaching or, or do one or the other. So I, I'm thinking that there was gonna have to be an additional staff member to help do that.
Well, it sounds like to me too.
Yeah, provide that oversight.
Making sure we're talking about the funding aspect.
Yeah.
And I, I support that. Um, I think it's a, a good call to have it monitored by a non-coach, by a district employee. Um, because the, the liability potential is, it's just big. Because we can't get insurance for this. Um, and we need to take cautious, a cautious approach and as safe as we can. That's my opinion.
You know, Mike Tyson said, it's always, it's always fun and games until somebody punches you in the face. This is one of those, it all looks really good until we have, you know, fifteen kids that are sick. But um, so we have to do everything we can to prevent that if we're gonna allow activities.
And I would also say that once, once you get this on paper and you see the plan and it's, there's the possibility that it's just not gonna all sink and it's not gonna work. And, or it could be that we only allow two sports to condition and train in a certain chunk of time because of the need to do all this coordination and training and um oversight. So, you know, it will be what it will be and it, and, you know, I, I think our expectations just need to be realistic and supportive and we'll see what happens.
We're providing a parameter.
Yeah, the expectations will be clear. We can, we can organize it. That's not an issue. We've, we've been doing that. Uh, and we understand the process. We understand how to do that. But, you know, the expectation will be very clear that, you know, if, if the practices aren't followed, we just shut it down. I mean, that, that, that'll just be the, you know, for that sport, if there's, if they're not following it, we just shut them down and, and that makes it simple.
And do you need us to give any guidance on allowing for the coaching contracts to be prorated and rewritten?
I don't think so because we're still within the same, uh, we're still following our, our collective bargaining agreement for our salary guide and, and uh, and whatnot. So I don't, I don't anticipate any concerns there and, and I don't think Kevin does either.
And um, do you need our direction on use of volunteers for sports?
Other than my, my, I know how our, our sports um activities work. We rely heavily on, on, on uh our volunteers. And especially if we're gonna be spacing, you know, or distancing, uh, we're gonna have people spread out further. So it's gonna be even more of a need for volunteers. So I think we need them and I recommend we use them, but we just have to be a little more descriptive about the parameters in which they operate as far as, you know, when they're here, which cohort they're with and, and that they're a consistent uh, uh person in that cohort.
Sounds right. Does anybody have any comments about, about that aspect of it, the volunteers?
Uh, I would support Troy with having volunteers. They're essential to what we're doing.
And like, and people in the community have been doing it and they like doing it, they like feeling included. And as much as we can, keeping this normalized is, is in everybody's best interest. And you guys have got a real good focus on uh what the problem is and, and how we can keep doing it. I, yeah, I'm all over the volunteers.
I, I, I wanna, I wanna reemphasize just, just one more time how wide open liability left wise we are on this. We've got zero coverage. We've got zero coverage. One kid gets sick, one coach gets sick, and our district is bankrupt. I mean, is that, is that really the kind of gamble we want to take? One, one kid, one kid, and we're bankrupt. That's the, I mean, that's the decision that we're gonna make right now.
When you lay it out like that, I don't understand how, how I can say yes to this. No, really, truly, I, I'm sorry. I, I may be just coming in late, but I, I didn't understand it to that level. A district, that's, I think we have a larger requirement than putting on sports this fall, this year.
And that, that is another consideration. If um, if we, if a special session of the, of the legislature doesn't happen and it doesn't allow um public entities to be, you know, protected from lawsuits related to COVID. Um, yeah, we're opening up ourselves to huge liability and, and that's why I think it's important for us to recognize that. You know, it's a risk. It's, we're not, just because someone doesn't, just because someone gets sick doesn't mean they're gonna sue the district and wipe us out. And that could definitely happen because we know our society and we're litigious um world in, in our country. So yes, that is a big, a big piece of the puzzle. Do we agree to allow for more in-person activities at this time by green lighting sports without any insurance to cover us for that liability?
We're talking about green lighting, what, on the first? Is, what's the date that we're talking about green lighting on here?
And that, I think that's kind of dependent on Kevin and Troy and the um coaches when they can get organized and get everybody trained. I wouldn't see that that happening. I would say earliest mid-September. But I don't know. Kevin, what do you think?
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Troy.
I think we need two weeks. I mean, we have, we already have a foundational uh plan together, but we would have to, we would have to refine it. But I would say at least two weeks. How about that, Kevin?
Yeah, and uh, I, I would, I, I still think we should look at, I know we want to give uh equal access to all the sports and everything, but I do think there's a re, all these, all these other districts going by like seasons to uh, to keep the cohorts from crossing and doing that type of stuff and, and weather issues and just the fact that the uh, the uh indoor is not as safe as the outdoor and it's easier to do it. I think we should look at that. And I mean, we, I've already talked to my coaches and kind of laid out a spring, fall, winter type proposal and all of them were for it. Uh, so I don't think anybody would be offended if we ended up rolling with that type of thing. But the, the more we keep it, the, the safer we keep it, all the smart things we can possibly do. I think we need to and I'm obviously, obviously we need to.
And you know, I, it's a tough, it's a tough call. And you know, the, the social, emotional wellbeing of our kids, the physical wellness of our kids, um, the, the safety of our kids and our community under a pandemic, it, it's a tough call. Um, I'm inclined to support the controlled conditioning and training. What do you all, uh, yeah, what, what do we, what do we think?
Uh, I'm still in favor of uh the training and conditioning. But I would also support Moffett in uh deciding what that is to, I guess, in some way, limit the risk. If, per se, if we're not indoors, you know what I mean? So, but I would certainly support us putting a plan together to start making this happen.
I concur.
John and Teresa?
I've break laid it out with Moffett and continuing to be as safe as absolutely possible. That's what needs to hap- that's what I like, would like to happen.
And I would be in favor, you know, when a safe plan is put together, which I, sounds like Kevin is already in the process of doing that with coaches and such. I think our kids need it.
And Rod?
So I, I think the pieces, that the pieces that would make me reasonably comfortable, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be uncomfortable um, would be the uh, the outdoor only. The um, I think what Moffett is talking about, about splitting up the season so that we don't have the cohorts overlapping is a really good idea. And a lot of the kids are the same kids anyhow, so we're gonna be engaging most of them for that whole time anyhow. Um, and the other piece is the, the monitoring. The, the, the monitoring of every one of these activities that we have, the whole time that it's going on, at least for, at least until we know that, that our coaches are starting to get the hang of it and doing a good job so that we can back off on that monitoring. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be a mess at first. I mean, people aren't gonna know what they're doing. Um, so.
And, and it's really, it's really interesting because the intention, when you, when you start being around people is to keep yourself six feet apart and, but the more you, you are in each other's presence, you just naturally migrate back toward each other. And so it's, I agree, Rod, it's um monitoring and making sure that we condition ourselves and whatever that means, maybe we give everybody noodles, you know, those swim noodles to, to, to represent that six feet or whatever. Honestly, just to make sure we have visuals to keep that um, to remind ourselves. Because as humans, we, we are just drawn to each other and that, that physical, you know, closeness is something that um a lot of us just naturally migrate toward without thinking about it. So it's breaking our habits and um, yeah, it's, it's gonna be interesting to see how it, it plays out.
I might, can I make a suggestion? And this is if Moffett wants to do this, but this is a suggestion. Cause I know in the past when we've gotten into issues like this, and maybe not as big as this, but uh we've put together a committee uh because there is a lot of information and there's a lot of questions. But potentially putting together a committee with Moffett leading it, maybe a couple of school board members, a couple of coaches, a couple of parents. And maybe they can help him and put this plan together and then be back to us on like September fourteenth. I think is our next meeting with a proposal.
Is that something that would be helpful, Kevin, or are you comfortable with?
I know, I'm gonna, don't interject just shortly. We, I gotta be careful with, with even allowing Kevin at this point. The, the level of expectation that our teachers are gonna be faced with on Monday morning is um, is really unprecedented. Um, if you've seen the earlier presentation, they're teaching a full day from a distance with a program they've never seen, uh, using instructional stat- strategies they've never used. And to throw another committee that involves any instructional staff right now, I really can't support that. We just don't physically have the ability to do that. Um, you know, classified folks or parents, um, coaches, um, you know, potentially. But even our administrators, I can't, I can't have them on another committee right now. We already have so many that we, we can't even manage our day. It's just, it's just really taxing. So if there is a committee, it's gonna have to be some kind of ad hoc committee that, that reports back, you know, to an administrator or something that doesn't require their participation.
And I guess that's a question for Troy and Kevin. Do you think it's, it, at this, at this point, with everything that's happening, would a committee be helpful or, or not? I, I can see pros and cons. Um, I, I see it more as a con, honestly, bringing um people together now to try to get organized. When I think you have in mind a, a, a design that you can work with your, your coaching staff to, to finalize. But I, I don't want to speak for you or anybody else. So, yeah, Troy and Kevin.
The process is, is defined for us. We have to follow the process. It's, it's all defined. It's just a matter of implementing it and getting people to follow it. Um, that's really the biggest piece. And the coaches are gonna be able to design their own activities. Um, they just have to, they, they'll have the spacing and, you know, the, the face covering requirements and the sanitization and the, and the cleaning responsibilities that they'll have to do themselves. We'll just have to make sure that they have a clear understanding of what that is and we oversee that it's getting done. So I don't, I don't see a need for a committee at this time, but um, you know, welcome input.
Good thought. Um.
I, I was, I was only suggesting if Kevin thought that it would help them. That's all.
Yeah.
If it wouldn't help them, then I'm fine without it, either way.
Erica, go ahead.
So yeah, it sounds like Kevin had some really great um stuff that he's already figured out and bounced off his coaches. Um, it sounds like maybe he and I and Dale need to get together and, and see kind of what that layout might be if this is becoming a reality and to coordinate training and systems and so that we can get those in place. I mean, we haven't even done that training with our teachers yet, right, to be in the building. And um, I'm gonna be blunt, that's more important to me, to get our staff in the building and safe than it is for me to train coaches. Um, and so, um, I, I mean, I have to get that, that done. Um, and we need our nurses to, to figure out what that will look like and create that. Um, cause that training doesn't even exist for coaches yet, um, with the. Um, cause that training doesn't even exist for coaches yet, um, within the legacy system. And so I just want to again, be re, really realistic about the turnover time when safety is of utmost importance. Because we're dealing with something like, you know, we've said over and over. And we want to make sure, because we're doing this in the best interest of kids, but we also have to do this with the overlay of a pandemic. Um, and so it sounds like Moffett has everything ready to go. We can get together and I can communicate with the nurses tomorrow so that we can get this up and running, uh, for systems.
And, um, and I would just add to, just for what it's worth. Um, let's say it takes three to four weeks to get this going before we can actually get kids. Um, the cohorts of 10 training and conditioning together. In the meantime, coaches can be, um, connecting with the kids and giving them workouts to do on their own. And making, making team meetings in Zoom so they can feel that connection. There's a lot that can be happening, I would think, even if they're not coming together in person in cohorts. Um, and, and maybe there is a, a stopgap plan to get us to ease into that in-person, um, moment. So I just wanted to put that out there too. In case it's at all useful. And if it's not, forget I even mentioned it, so.
So, so I want to talk a little bit about the Sep- September 14th date. And is that realistic or is that too aggressive, given what Erica was saying? And I, I certainly don't want what we're trying to hurry up to get sports going to slow down anything on the education side of our district. So Troy or Erica, do you want to comment on that?
If we disagree that that would be the earliest date.
That's the earliest?
That would be the earliest date and leave it at that. We'll, we'll develop as we go and we'll communicate with coaches and, and let them know if it's going to take longer, it'll take longer. Um, you know, the way we're operating right now with instruction is we have a schedule. We're bringing people back, but we don't even know if we have enough teachers to teach yet. So we're, we're, it's just a build it as you go, you know, it really is. And so we can say, we can shoot for a date, but with the understanding that if we're not ready by then and everybody's not properly trained, then we, then we move it out until we're, we are ready. But, um, we would move it as quickly as we could, of course.
I like that thought and that, that approach. And you know, September 14th is just one of those dates. That's our next board meeting. Um, so it makes sense that we'll at least hopefully be able to see what the, the plan is. And maybe we'll know more about the timing by then. If it's not on September 14th, we'll have a better understanding of when that might be, so.
When are we going to know about the liability stuff? When, when is the next chance that we may know about it?
Next special legislative session, I would not hold my breath. The police brutality and the, uh, police, uh, reform is really the highest priority. And I think it's getting the majority of the attention. Uh, you know, they've, they pretty much balanced the budget now. Uh, so that's going to be the majority of the issues. And I don't know, I think they're, I think they're still waiting for the, the biggest, you know, big national lawsuit before they determine what's going to happen. Florida might set that precedent for us. So we just keep waiting. But I don't think it's going to get resolved anytime soon.
Um, so it sounds like we're winding down on issues that we need to talk about. What, what more does anybody board, any board member want to, um, say or ask? Or is there still questions that Troy and the administrators need answered before we?
I think, the only other thing I could think of right at the moment, but it's been a long day. So my thought process isn't very clear right now. But, uh, uh, as soon as the community hears that we're, we're opening our facilities for activities, they're going to want to come in as, as a youth organization. Um, and other activities. And, and as we've just talked about, we're not able to, we don't think at this point that we're able to allow our middle school kids to participate because of spacing and, and potential congestion. So I would certainly, um, uh. Hope that the board would support us continuing to hold outside groups, uh, limit them or not have them in the, in the facility. Until we're, till we're way down the road with being successful with our own kids being on campus.
I support that.
I do as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I honestly thought this meeting was going to talk a lot more about that, honestly.
Get out for, for our kids first, you know, to get them on campus. And, and then if we find out that we have a couple of fields that we're not using and there's a way to get them on without, you know, interacting, then we could potentially open up some of the space. But we, like we've talked about all night, we just need to take it one step at a time.
If it's Moffett's developing the plan, can, can you make sure that the, that the implications of having a mo, a monitor or monitors for the activities is, is taken into account? So we get a, at least a look at what it's going to cost us?
Or yes?
Um, Greg and John, do you have any, um. Any opinions, um, either way about the question of do we open up our, our district facilities to non-school? Um, organizations and activities at this point? Troy is recommending that we not, because we need to figure out what we're doing with our, with our kids.
I'm with Troy. I, I concur.
I agree with Troy.
Greg?
Yeah, I agree also. So we should, uh, you know, put our toes in the water with this group, first group of stuff with Moffett and kind of see how it goes first.
Yeah. And you know, at some point we may be ready to, to agree to allow non-school, um, groups to use our facilities. It just, with the liability piece alone, it just. It, it, it's going to be a, it's going to be a tough one. Um, so thank you, Troy, for raising that. What else have we missed?
Uh, I just have one question. So, uh, in this K-12 school sports limited return to play, um, it doesn't really address like, uh, clubs, like. The student government stuff, any of those kinds of things? The, do you think that that falls into the limited in-person instruction or where does that fall?
It does. Yes.
Those things fall into the side of category?
Okay, as long as it's one of those needs, which, yeah, most of them would fall into the, one of those needs.
Okay.
So like the leadership and the clubs and, and all those fall under that?
Yeah, we haven't talked about the specifics of those yet, but I, I'm pretty confident that most of those can be run remotely.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I would think that there's enough creativity, um, to, to make those happen. And after, on and after October 19th, maybe we'll have a better sense of if there's going to be room to bring people into cohorts of 10, to do those in person. We won't know that until then, so. Any, what else?
I think I have all the information that I need to move forward. Thank you for the, the rich discussion. Appreciate it.
Kevin, how are you feeling about what you heard from us? Is there enough consensus and? Direction?
I think so, and my coaches have been good and excited and I think they're willing to do whatever we, we, we gotta do. I'm also, I mean, I, I get every point of you on this. This is, it's not fun, I know, and it's.
And, uh, and then Jared and Dale and Erica, um, anything else that you need? That we haven't talked about?
No, I think you guys addressed everything.
All right.
I just, I mean, as always, I appreciate this, you guys, like Troy said, very rich discussion. It's, it's not easy. This isn't fun for anybody and, you know, being in a leadership role, I really appreciate you guys considering all the sides of it. And we all care about our kids, right? We want to do what's best and, and it's a heavy decision. So I, I really appreciate you guys considering all, all the pieces.
Thank you.
I also agree with that too, you know, um. I like, like Moffett, you know, I'm torn. Um, but there's a big part of me that there, there's just a term that, that comes to my mind right away. It's called student athlete. It's not athlete, student. And so we really have to be focusing our attention on, on how do we get our kids back in the building and, and, and teaching them? But I also understand the importance of our social emotional learning with our kids. When they're at home in front of a computer and they're not with their friends and they're not doing the things that they want to do. That's, I'm, I'm like Moff, I'm, I'm torn. Um, but I think I lean more towards the way, we, we've got to get our kids in the building, um, and, and teaching them. And, um, and I think that's got to be our priority.
Thank you. And then, and I would guess that every, all five members of the board support that prioritization, learning first. Um, and.
Absolutely.
Has to be.
Yeah. So does any board member want to say anything before I adjourn us? I also want to express gratitude to everyone, um, on this call. I, I know our administrators, I've said this before, our administrators have worked more hours and harder than they ever have in their lives. And for the good of our district and the, and for the, um, good of our kids. So thank you, everyone. We so appreciate you. And with that, let's adjourn this meeting at nine 56. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.